I'm calling to the order, the meeting for the LaPorte County Commissioners for Wednesday, October 16th. If you could all rise for the pleasure of the meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Moritzensky.
Present.
And Commissioner Mathias. You have a corner.
Thank you. Consideration of the approval of, consideration of the agenda first.
Yeah, we have one change to the agenda.
Right. Deletion of?
Eleven C.
Eleven C, okay.
The licensing agreement with Verizon for the Sheriff's Department. They asked that we pull that off. With that change, I would make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consideration of approval of minutes from October 2nd.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consideration of claims?
This week, we have payroll ending October 11th, 2019, in the amount of $1,215,883, and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $924,341.19.
Motion to approve the claims?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission at this time? Anybody from the public who would like to address the commission?
Perfect.
Anybody from the public who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Department had comments. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Commissioners. In late September, the Sheriff's Office sent out requests for proposals for food service in our county jail. We began to accept per published request on October 4th those requested proposals. It closed yesterday at 4:00 on the 15th of October, and tonight, the county attorney and the auditor have been delivered those proposals, and they're with the county attorney and the auditor now.
I want to go ahead and open this.
Sure.
And from Summit, and I believe you had these bid in alternates, didn't you, for both?
That's correct.
Okay. It's broken down, I believe, cost per meal, $3.50 to $3.75, $2.78, $3.76 to $400, $2.003, $401 to $425, $1.940, $426 to $450, $1.889, $451 to $475, $1.841, $476 to $500, $1.800, $501 to $525, $1.764, $526 to $550, $1.731, $551 to $575, $1.701, $576 to $600, $1.674. Less than $3.50 is not listed, and I believe the alternate includes the other facility. Is that, is that how you did it? Okay.
Yes.
On this, the alternate for this particular Summit food proposal, $3.50 to $3.75, $1.619, $3.76 to $400, $1.544, $401 to $425, $1.480, $426 to $450, $1.427, $451 to $475, $1.379, $476 to $500, $1.337, $501 to $525, $1.299, $526 to $550, $1.264, $551 to $575, $1.233, and then $576 to $600, $1.205. So that represents the proposal from Summit. Careful. Let's see, I don't know. A little safer.
Safety first.
And again, it's bid in alternates, county jail and community corrections on the one, jail, community corrections, and juvenile services, the alternative. For the jail and community corrections, Kelwell proposal, $3.50 to $3.75, $1.2455, $3.75 to $400, $1.2098, $481 to, $401 to $425, $1.1794, $426 to $450, $1.1525, $451 to $475, $1.1285, $476 to $500, $1.1086, $501 to $525, $1.0873, $526 to $550, $1.0696, $551 to $575, $1.0534, $575 to $600, $1.0386. $601 plus at $1. They list a proposal of prepackaged meals at $5, and Kelwell Cafe Commission at 25%. The juvenile service, including juvenile service in the alternate. $3.50 to $3.75, $1.5825, $3.76 to $400, $1.5252, $401 to $425, $1.4766, $426 to $450, $1.4336, $451 to $475, $1.3951, $476 to $500, $1.3605, $501 to $525, $1.3308, $526 to $550, $1.3009, $551 to $575, $1.2751, $576 to $600, $1.2513, $601 plus, $1.2146, prepackaged meals bid at $5, Kelwell Cafe Commission 25%, and snack price, 75 cents. And that's the Kelwell proposal. This was, and where was the, we got the box on?
Right here.
Tiger Correctional Services, timely received October 14th, 19 at 9:50 a.m. Again, it's bid in alternates. Jail and Community Corrections first. Tiger Correctional Services, $3.50 to $3.75 at $1.38, $3.76 to $400, $1.35, $401 to $425, $1.31, $426 to $450, $1.29, $451 to $475, $1.26, $476 to $500, $1.24, $501 to $525, $1.22, $526 to $550, $1.20, $551 to $575, $1.19, $576 to $600 is $1.18. Their alternate bid, which includes the juvenile center correctional, community corrections and county jail, Tiger proposal, $3.50 to $3.75, it's $1.71, $3.76 to $400, $1.66, $401 to $425, $1.61, $426 to $450, $1.58, $451 to $475, $1.54, $476 to $500, $1.51, $501 to $525, $1.48, $526 to $550, $1.45, $551 to $575, $1.43, and $576 to $600, $1.41. And that's the Tiger proposal. The last one received is this. See, I wonder if it's a, you know what, here's that. Okay. Thank you. Received box, received Trinity Services Group, received October 15th, 10:49, again, timely received, under the bid documents. Trinity Services has also bid the alternate. To the D and, okay. Option one. Cost per meal, $3.50 to $3.75, $1.419, $3.76 to $400, $1.378, $401 to $425, $1.342, $426 to $450, $1.314, $451 to $475, $1.290, $476 to $500, $1.268, $501 to $525, $1.250, $526 to $550, $1.232, $551 to $575, $1.216, $576 to $600, $1.202, and kosher meal listed at $4. The alternative, on the option, they had, both jail and juvenile center on this particular option. $3.50 to $3.75, $1.236, $3.76 to $400, $1.207, $401 to $425, $1.180, $426 to $450, $1.163, $451 to $475, $1.147, $476 to $500, $1.134, $501 to $525, $1.120, $526 to $550, $1.108, $551 to $575, $1.098, $576 to $600, $1.008. They had the juvenile center with this, with a separate bid on top. $9 to $13, $8.78, $8.759, $14 to $18, $6.059, $19 to $23, $4.780, $24 to $28, $4, $29 to $33, $3.530, $34 to $38, $3.199, $39 to $43, $2.953, $44 to $48, $2.747, and $49 to $53, $2.598, kosher meal listed at $4. And that completes the bids, and we would recommend the commission accept and show the bids as received, refer them to the Sheriff's Department for recommendation for ultimate bid award.
I entertain a motion to that effect.
I would so move that motion.
Sheriff, I have, I was curious, couple of questions. The numbers that Mr. Fiedman was reading, was that the number of inmates per day, or is it the number of meals per day?
Yes, average daily population and the number of, each inmate would receive one meal per day, but it's based on the average daily population.
Okay. And like, do you specify, like, the quantity and the nutritional value, or can you compare, are there apples and apples?
Well, we'll see when we look at them, but we met with each of these food service vendors, and we've talked about the nutritional values, and exactly what they have to offer, and there are special diets, whether they be medical diets, whether they be diets that are associated with religious preference, but also diets that would be specific to juveniles as well, if the commission and the council so chooses to go with privatizing the food service out of our jail for the juvenile services center, because they have much different nutritional requirements than what adults have.
All right. A motion has been made, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So do you wait for your recommendations?
And we would also like to have a workshop prior to the next council meeting, so we can discuss this further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads? Yes, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I know you all have received an email invitation to our open house at our new campus facility on Ziegler Road. It's going to be tomorrow, from 4 to 6, we're cutting at 4:30. I just wanted to come by personally and invite you. We're trying to get back to a established site. We're currently a secured site now, and I'm not sure if you received the calls, but we received the calls. We tried to get back to some regular operating hours, so we were closed on Sunday, because government, solid waste district basically doesn't operate on Sundays. First weekend that we closed was a beautiful weekend. A lot of people wanted to use our facility. They're so used to being unmanned and open 24/7, but now it is manned and is closed on regular hours, but we are doing some seasonal hours to try to keep the calls down and the residents happy. So Monday through Wednesday, we're going to be operating from 6 to 6, and then Thursday and Friday, we'll be operating from 8 to 6, and then on Saturday, we'll be operating from 8 to 5:30, and on Sunday, we'll be operating from 8 to 5:30, hoping that the public will have plenty of time to get out, dispose of their green waste, and we'll be able to monitor the site on a regular basis and make sure trash and undesirables aren't allowed in the site.
Right, thank you. But we look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Appreciate it, folks. Thanks for all your help on the board and everything.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. All right. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to, anybody, any other department head, sorry? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Golick from the Veterans Office. I have two announcements today for the public in general, veterans in particular. SCAM three weeks away, on Saturday, November 9th, right here in this room, at 10:00 a.m. The Saturday, November 9th, at 10:00 a.m., we will have the LaPorte County Patriotic Service Medal Ceremony. The sign up has been pretty light so far, but after I get back off vacation next week, I'll probably step up the effort, including tomorrow. So again, that's 10:00 a.m., November 9th, on Saturday, at this room. On Monday, November 11th, which is a holiday, county holiday, it's Veterans Day Ceremony, presented by the Mayor's Veterans Committee, that's being held at 9:30 a.m. at the LaPorte Civic Auditorium on Ridge Street. There'll be coffee and doughnuts served from 8:00 to 9:15 a.m., and the ceremony itself will start at 9:30 a.m. So that's on Veterans Day, November 11th. Joe Donnelly, the former state, US Senator, is scheduled to be a speaker there, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any other department heads? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the next item on the agenda, there's a request. Item A, consider permission to approach the council for the 2020 health insurance premium, and consider issuing proposals for employee assistance program part.
Good evening. We've received information from our broker regarding our 2020 health insurance. While our stop loss insurance liability will increase by approximately $150,000, our health insurance premiums will be staying the same for 2020, so I'd like to request permission to go before the council to provide them with that information for budgeting.
I just want to add a couple of items. I served on this insurance committee, and we are going, the amount that'll go up next year is $152,000.
Correct.
But then we are going to get a rebate check of, actually, we have already received and will continue to receive a rebate check from the prescription drug program, which will offset that increase, so there'll be no net increase because of that. So that's good news for both, as as a county, as well as our employees, so that's a good thing. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was during our insurance committee, we also talked about introducing preventive exams.
Correct.
So starting next year, that is year 2020, all county employees are encouraged to go for a wellness exam or a preventive exam, and if they do that, they will get a reduction of $5 in their premium per pay period, and that'll be effective 2021.
That is correct.
That'll be 2021, and the one thing I want to emphasize is those preventive exams are not a part of the deductible, so it's covered 100%. It's a way of encouraging everybody to take better care of their health, go for their preventive exams, and they'll be able to incentivize that by giving a $5 reduction per pay period in their portion of the insurance premium. So if they do that in 2020, then this will be effective in 2021.
That's correct, right. And I plan on having a certificate available for open enrollment this year to start handing out to the employees so they can be prepared for 2020.
So by and large, it was a good insurance committee meeting, so thank you for that, and I entertain a motion for Ms. Mossman to approach the council for the health insurance for next year.
Motion to approve, permission to approach council and to the issuing of the proposals for the assistance program.
Program. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is consider permission for road closure during 5K girls on the run northwest Indiana, Jody Orant. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I understand you traveled from far to be here for this event.
I did, I did, from Highland in Lake County. Yeah, our event is on Saturday, November 9th, at the Fairgrounds, and we would ask that we could close a portion of Ziegler Road from Indiana 2 to ju, just past the road where the waste, the waste road, you can dump your waste, for like 11:45 until 1:00.
Okay. Is the sheriff, is here, sheriff, are you okay with that?
It's one of his plate turturists.
Okay.
Yeah, clearly left.
Very good. I entertain a motion to that.
I think we can make that work out, yeah. Promotion, permission to grant, motion to grant, make motion to grant permission to close the road.
Close the road. I'd second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you for encouraging this, and that will improve the health of all involved, so thank you very much for doing that.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Next item is consider waiving adoption fees for cats at the animal shelter for one-time event. Chin Bernard. Good evening, Chin.
Good evening, Commissioners. We've had a challenging couple of months. Our cat population has hit an all-time high. We've reached out to rescues to help us out, and we're kind of needing some help, and all shelters are being faced, as well as us. The rescues are full, so we kind of thought, and other shelters have done this, I've not always been a big fan of it, but we're trying to be a no-kill facility, and we thought that if we had an event where we could waive the adoption fee for cats, and we came up with an idea of possibly doing a meow-ween, and doing it on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 29th and 30th, because that is our late night, that we're at the shelter till 6:00, that if on those two days, we could waive the adoption fees. I know by ordinance, the adoption fees are set, so we thought if we could waive the fees for those two days to obviously approved adopters, the same policies would be in place as far as the adoptions. It's not like somebody's going to be able to just walk in and we're going to say, here you go. They, they'll still have to fill out an application, and obviously responsible homes is what we're looking for, so.
Mr. Fiedman, do we have to do anything to make this happen?
Just to make it a part of the record that you approved the request.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to that.
I would make a motion to approve waiving the adoption fees for cats.
All right. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Might make a nice Christmas present for maybe your county employees, give them a cat. I got one of them.
Bold business. Consider second reading on ordinance to vacate portion of alleyway in Westville. Sandra Jocelyn from Gary Davis Associates.
Hi, Commissioners. Karen K. Calley here for Gary Davis today. The reason for this vacate is so that Ms. Jocelyn can combine the two parcels that she owns, ones on each side of the alleyway, and then she can put in a septic system that's up to code. The current one is out of date and not acceptable.
Mr. Fiedman, any comments?
The ordinance is consistent with the type and form of ordinances that we've approved in the past. There's been plain commission recommendation as well. We're comfortable recommending it to you for approval.
Very good.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item is consider final lease with LaPorte Hospital for the use of House Affair Building for temporary EMS base. Mr. Fiedman, you want to comment on this?
Yes, as the commission is aware, we've been able to work with LaPorte Hospital on getting space rented at a dollar a month to assist with the temporary housing for EMS during the construction of the new EMS base. We've reviewed the material. It is consistent with the type of leases, medical office space leases that are done, describes the area to be leased and the conditions under which provision is made. The council's previously authorized temporary improvements to the House Affair Building to allow it to be used for the EMS temporary base, and so we are recommending approval of this lease.
I want to comment before we adopt this. I want to thank the president of LaPorte Hospital, Ms. Asher Dickinson, and also our EMS staff who have been working to make those improvements. Ms. Dickinson has been extremely helpful to work with, so I'm very grateful to that, and Andrew McQuire and his team have also put in their time and effort to make this happen, so I wanted to express my gratitude to them. So with that, I entertain a motion.
I would make motion to approve the final lease.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. New business. Consideration of MOU between Edmentum Courseware Pilot and Juvenile Service Center. Erica Stahlworth is not here.
Hi, I'm Bryn Kleist. I'm the education coordinator at the juvenile center.
Hi.
So we have this MOU that we got from Edmentum Courseware, and we're just asking for you to consider approving it.
Mr. Fiedman, have you had a chance to review?
Yes, Edmentum, a large national firm that does this type of education materials and around the country, well thought of. I think the juvenile center and their staff feels very comfortable with this particular courseware, and so we're comfortable with the agreement and would recommend consideration.
Consideration. I entertain a motion to that.
I'd make motion to approve the MOU. I'd make a motion to approve the MOU.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Then consideration of contract with Weaver Consultants Group for John Emory Road Project, Mitch Bishop. Good evening. Mitch, before you talk about this particular item, I want to congratulate you and thank you for your recent success in getting another grant.
Yeah, that's a good project. 17 lay miles, 17 lay miles from.
Community crossings grant.
1,000 north from US 12 to St. Joe County line, so.
So keep up the good work.
Should bid it out and hopefully get the payment laid, May, next year, May, June.
You want to, you want to mention the amount?
A million.
A million dollars of community crossing plan. That's a good, good amount of money that you brought to the county, and thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no problem. This was eight, tonight, this one's about 900,000. I came to you before for an MOU. This is a grant between Indat, NCT, and the county. This is to improve the intersection. It's a safety project on Emory Road and 700 North. About two months ago, you signed the MOU. This is the study proposal from Weaver Consultants. They started doing the work with NCT probably a year, year and a half ago, and since all of the contracts, and this is 100% reimbursable grant, actually, it's 105%, because we negotiated MOU that I get, or the county gets back 5% additional for the work that I'm doing. So you saw, he reviewed it, this asking for your signatures so we could commence this project.
And again, has been good work on this. Has been a lot back and forth as we got the MOU between NCT, Indat, and the county, so we're very comfortable with that. Certainly, the project is needed. It's going to enhance safety over there, and Weaver, I think, has been part of the project for at least a year, I think, in terms of the planning phase, so we're comfortable recommending this to you.
Thank you. I entertain a motion.
Not every day you get a grant for 105%, that's for sure. I'd motion to approve the.
Did you have the?
Yes, thank you. I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And the last item, we deleted from the agenda, and that gets us to commissioners' comments.
No comments.
I have a few. First one is I attended the Northwest Indiana Forum Get Together in Chicago. That was for the site selectors. Mr. Reardon was there, Tony Rodriguez was there. It was a nice event. Met the Mr. Jim Schellinger from IED, our Secretary of Commerce, and it was a very productive meeting. He did assure that the money that was earmarked for KIP is there, so he's just going through some paperwork, so hopefully we'll get that done. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, we've been talking about Legionella, and last week, we had a conference call with the Centers for Disease Control as well as Indiana State Department of Health and our county health department. Yes, we have had more cases than what we usually see every year, but they have seen a national trend. It is actually, over the last five years, the folks at CDC told us that the number of cases of Legionella has almost doubled. And in our state, especially in the northern part of the state, near Lake Michigan also, the number of cases have increased. So what we've been doing in collaboration with the Indiana State Department of Health is we are doing some epidemiological surveillance to see are there, is there any particular place where these individuals who contracted Legionella have visited, but there's no pattern, there's no single source, because the cases in our county have been all over. They have been in Michigan City, they have been in LaPorte, they have been in LaCrosse, they have been in Rolling Prairie, Westville, all in different places. So we'll continue to do the epidemiological surveillance and to see if there is any particular source that we may be able to address. I don't, I'm sharing this information that for people understand that this is a national trend that is happening all over. But one of the things that was brought to our attention, both by CDC and the State Department of Health, is because in our county, they have seen that the number of times Legionella is being tested in patients who have respiratory symptoms has increased quite a bit. And what it means is because of the awareness due to these conversations that we have had, the healthcare providers are testing it more often. So what it means is that possibly these infections were there in previous years, but because we are testing more often, we are detecting it more often. And so that's also one of the, so there's several reasons why the number of cases have gone up. Number one is the, there is a national trend towards increasing in the number of cases. But I think the important thing for all of us to understand is that if we have some respiratory symptoms, especially if somebody's a smoker, elderly, if they have respiratory symptoms with high fever and cough, definitely seek medical attention and have yourself checked out. And the last thing I want to talk about is the Vibrant Communities Initiative. Vibrant Communities Initiative is a collaboration between Unity Foundation and the Visitors Bureau. It's a partnership, both Maggie Spars from Unity Foundation and Jack Arnett have been spearheading this campaign. And over the next two weeks, we are going to have five meetings. Those are like listening sessions. That'll be in different parts of the county, Michigan City, LaPorte, Westville, LaCrosse, and Rolling Prairie. And the purpose of these listening sessions is for individuals, the community members, to share their opinions about where we need to be as a county, as a community, 15, 20, 25 years from now. And together, we can plan, we can collaborate, and then by taking the input from the various members of the community, we are working with a firm called Planning Next out of Columbus, Ohio, and then they will, they will help facilitate these listening sessions, and then we'll come up with an action plan as to how we can work on some of the priorities that have been identified in these listening sessions. That way, we can plan for our collective future. So I hope everybody who's listening has this information, and we have been sending out emails. There are five different listening sessions. One is for the South County. It's on October 21st at the center of LaCrosse. All of these are from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. And on October 22nd, Tuesday, it's at the LaPorte Civic Auditorium. On Wednesday, October 23rd, it's at the Dworkin Center at the PNW in Westville. And then October 28th, it's at the Blue Chip Casino Hotel. And then on October 29th, Tuesday, it's at the New Prairie High School. I hope all of you can participate in one of these listening sessions and share your ideas. I think that's all I had, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.